Okay, good afternoon. This is the Special Personnel Commission meeting, January 27th. And do I, I don't have to read the public notice or the
No.
Okay, great. Roll call. So I believe all of our commissioners are present. I am sorry, I'm in a truck right now. So sorry, I apologize for the bounciness. And I will declare that I do have one individual over the age of 18 in the car with me. Do I need the name? Do I need to get the name?
No, that's enough. That's enough for just us anyways.
Okay. And all commissioners are present in the meeting. So 2.02 order of business. Does anybody wish to change anything on the agenda in terms of the order of business? Hearing nothing. We'll go ahead and move to 3.01, which is public comment. And this is an opportunity for the public to address the commission. Speakers are limited to three minutes and the total time is limited to 20 minutes. Are there any members out there who would like to address the commission?
If there are members out on Zoom who'd like to address the commission, if you can just do the little hand raise icon and then you'll be called in the order in which we received it. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody on Zoom.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. So 3.02 correspondence received.
So we did receive one written correspondence for this meeting and I'm having trouble getting it to load up here. Okay, here we go. So Catherine Oden would like to submit the following. I'd like to submit a public comment for the upcoming planning commission meeting regarding the accounting technician job description as previously discussed. I believe the current job description does not accurately reflect my duties. Below are several key responsibilities that were omitted from the draft. Credit card and purchasing program management. I administer the district's credit card and corporate purchasing program, including initiating and maintaining accounts. I also update procedures to ensure compliance with district policies, laws, and best practices in managing public funds. Item two, contract and vendor monitoring. I review contracts to track performance standards, warranties, and maintenance requirements while identifying opportunities for economies of scale. I research and evaluate suppliers, coordinate product promotions, and arrange for samples or demonstrations as needed. Three is bid preparation and vendor coordination. I contact vendors for quotations, analyze bids, assist in the preparation of contracts. Additionally, assisting preparing board agenda items for bid awards, purchase orders, change orders, and equipment purchases. Four is purchase requisition management. I receive no review purchase requisition for accuracy and compliance with legal standards and district policies. I collaborate with departments to determine needs and budgets and process and monitor purchase orders through the system. Five is staff support and training. I respond to staff inquiries regarding account procedures, budget changes, and postings. I also provide training on accounting and purchasing procedures and assist with financial reporting through specialized accounting software. All these points will be considered as part of any updates to the job description. Thank you for your attention to this matter. That is the end of the written correspondence.
Okay, great. Thank you for reading that for us. All right. So we are moving on to 4.01, Union Representative Reports.
Well, hello, I'm gonna be a gentleman and let April go first so she doesn't punish me in the, in the future. So hi, April, it's Rob from SEIU.
Hi, Rob. Hi, everybody. Thank you for having us. I'll keep mine quick. I'm trying to remember when the last time was that I saw you guys. I think I did announce our new executive board for the 25 this next year, for 2025. I am again the president. Krista Kluber is my vice president, Nancy Bray is our secretary, and Judy Stagnoli is our treasurer. We have been still meeting with our elementary sites on Monday mornings. This morning, we were at Monarch Grove. And then we have two more sites, Still Hawthorne, and then Delmar will finish us up for February. And then we will be getting our sunshine letter over to HR here shortly. And then we'll be going into negotiations. So that's kind of it for now.
Great. Thank you, April. And Rob?
Hi, hello, good afternoon, everybody. So first off, I wanted to give a compliment to HR and to Rachel. In the last month, we've had some comments back from our members about some of the job duties and job classifications. And Rachel was real responsive to that. So I just want to say thank you to your department. And then the second topic, we attended a couple of meetings ago, or a couple of weeks ago about the budget. So that's been interesting and just want to let the Personnel Commission know and on behalf, I'm sure April will agree with me that us union members, you know, we're, we're the sounding board a lot for a lot of the policies and we absorb a lot of the misunderstandings and we try to direct it on the right, right path. So just wanted to remind everybody about our role. Okay, and so it's been an interesting couple of weeks, but we're looking forward to bargaining and and met with Greg and Rachel last week with Catherine Donner is our president and Lori Russell is our vice chair. And so in the next month or so, we'll get started, but that, that's the end of my update. But thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
All right, thank you. Okay. Commission staff reports.
So, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome back to our first meeting in 2025. I just wanted to take a moment and part of today's review of all of these job descriptions and reclassification project. The district, the Personnel Commission, and to some large extent, Rachel in collaboration with all of our, our union partners and staff across the district was recognized by the California School Personnel Commission Association for an innovative practice related to our reclassification efforts. And so I just wanted to, you know, thank, thank the Personnel Commission for undertaking the work and thank, thank Rachel and the rest of the department as well as Rob and April for their participation and all the staff across the district. So really a nice recognition of the, the time, energy, and effort that that's gone into this. And so, so again, just wanted to recognize, because I know Rachel won't toot her own horn back there, but so just wanted to get that out into the, to the public. And then we continue to chip away here as we get into the spring. Looking forward to sitting down with all three of our associations and collective bargaining and work that. And so with that, I'll hand it over to Ms. Robinson-Bang.
All right. So there's been a lot of great stuff happening, as you guys know, especially for classified side of the house. We've been working really closely with our union partners. They've been doing these listening sessions like CCA has been doing. Rob has been volunteering and doing pizza days and hosting snack and breakfast stuff for their members so that they have chances to collaborate. And we've been collaborating with our classified staff through the classification process, through workflow org charts, through highly specialized or highly qualified panel members for our oral word process and doing more comprehensive training so that we're not only, you know, recruiting more efficiently and equitably, but we're also promoting growth within our organization. So we're talking to our members about their upward mobility, about professional development. We just put something out in HR news regarding that. And then have some more PD opportunities, like we had our classified PD this morning via Zoom with Ms. Dawson and Mr. Pinkerton came on and presented and talked about some of the rezoning that I, I'm not sure if you guys are super in the loop on, but they're rezoning some of these districts. So as we move into the coming years, that means a lot of change for our families and potentially change for our classified staff and what their site preferences are. I was working at Zinshimer because my kid goes to Zinshimer, but now my kid goes to Los Rancho's. Then I might have some questions about transfer opportunities and what that looks like for me and what, what opportunities are out there. So we've been doing a lot of multi-tiered communication, collaboration with our staff and trying to proactively get ahead of some of these questions and help people get to where they need to be. So a huge thank you to all of our team that's been working through that. Cause I know, as Rob said, that our union partners are kind of the sounding board and they've been great advocates for their members as they come and sit with Greg and I and talk about things that we can kind of get ahead of proactively and collaborate on concerns that maybe staff, you know, nobody wants to hang out with HR, nobody wants to come talk to us, which is totally fine. And I get why that's the case. That way they have that safe collaborative place and then we can work on proactive solutions. So just a lot of great practice that we're going on out on the ground level from our staff here in the office. There's a lot of workflow organization changing. So and as you guys know, Mrs. Moreno is going to be retiring in October. So I know that we talked about her retiring. She has her official date now. It's going to be in October. And so as far as commission funded positions, which are your classified technicians are, there's a lot of change of duties happening right now, but we're not able to backfill that technician position. So that reabsorption of duties is kind of being sprawled out. We'll heed those transitions. So as that affects what their workload is, as it relates to the work they do for you guys, we'll come for our next budget projection. We'll bring you those recommendations because it is going to be changing. But there's going to be some people diving a little heavier into class sites and people pulling out. So a lot of ebbs and flows that are going to affect the positions that you guys come through the commission. So we'll report that back to you once this is kind of finalized. But yeah, lots of change happen.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So are you saying that the redistricting, a rebound or redistricting, as you're saying in terms of, so is that to balance out school population? Is that what you're trying to do?
Okay.
Yeah.
And it's also based on some projected housing that's, that still hasn't quite come to fruition yet. So projecting that out in the future, trying to make it where, just to balance the schools where we've got a CL Smith that's huge, over 500 kids, I believe. And then you have another school here in the, it's only maybe a 250 kids. So just trying to, to be thoughtful about the space and and not, not interrupting people's commutes. They are, they are grandfathering kids in. So if a parent has a student who's, let's say at Zinshimer, and they were redistrict now to be at Los Rancho's. If the parent has another student who's coming up and they want to stay in that school, the little, little brother, little sister can go and they can stay in the system. So they're not making them go to two different schools. So it's pretty well thought out.
Good.
Great. Okay, thank you. Commissioners, anybody have anything they wish to discuss or address?
I do not.
I do not either.
Okay, I just wanted a couple of things. One is I wanted to echo the thoughts or what's been said about the HR department and in particular, Rob and Bang for doing a ton of work on the reclassification and all of that. Really, really appreciate all of that. And then one other thing I just wanted to respond to was I really like hearing, having worked in human resources a lot, it's, it's very difficult to be proactive and I love how much I'm hearing about how proactive the department is being about things. And also really like hearing about professional development for the classified staff. I think that is always a, a hard thing. Or a little bit more challenging to address compared to certificated staff. And I really like hearing about what's going on there too. So thank you for all of that and everything you guys are doing.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, 5.01 approval of minutes from our previous meeting was that December 30th. Can't see it on my screen at the moment.
December 20.
Sorry, December 20th. Okay. Are those pulled, or can they be pulled up on the screeners? Everybody had an opportunity to view those. And are there any comments or questions?
Rachel, is there a particular document you want me to pull up here?
Go to the item 501 and then click the little link next to the little clock button. See that view minutes right there by the little clock? That's it.
There we go. Okay, so those were, yeah, our minutes from
No, that's, that's a small minute.
I'm okay. Any comments or questions? And if not, do I hear a motion?
I will make a motion that we approve our minutes for December 20th, 2024.
Nice second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, those are approved. Thank you for doing those. And then 5.02 personnel action items.
All right. So if you open that first link, Greg. So here is our regular item. As we go through here, if you're going to scroll down, obviously this time of year, we're not expecting big long lists here, but there's still work being done. As we scroll down towards classified staff, still some exciting movement. Obviously, there's our executive administrator position. There's one of our bus driver positions. So these are ones that we all kind of talk about behind the scenes and then getting to see the people actually plug into them and doing amazing work already is always really exciting. And you can close that one, Greg, and open the next link. The very bottom is a tab for January, once it loads up there. So at least I put some comments on here for you guys too, that you're welcome to look through. But basically, she styles some recruitments and process for the food service worker too. But placements have been made in the other positions that you guys see here and just to highlight attention to the wonderful Ms. Rady and all the work that she does. All of these recruitments are on her desk. She runs all of these. So it's a big, big job running our regular positions for classified staff. Varied rules, varying minimum qualifications, timelines, all that crazy stuff, different supervisors. And she's still making all of it happen. So really, really appreciative to her amazing eye for detail and keeping all of these things straight. She's wonderful at what she's doing. And we can close this one, Greg. And unless the commission has any questions about this item.
I do not.
Can't hear. She's helping us.
Becky?
Is she muted? I think she's muted. Yeah.
Okay, there we go. Sorry. The, I had one question. Sorry, I didn't get a chance to look back on some previous months, but it looked like there were a fair number of applicants for food service worker and custodian 20 some. Is that, is that pretty standard?
It is not standard. What, what we have found, especially this time of year, it is kind of average for this time of year and that, and maybe that's a little height and last year, I don't have the exact numbers. But usually we get a steady increase of people in the beginning of the year because everybody knows to be, if they are looking in public education, they know to be looking at that time. And this time of year, we're getting people that are applying for a position, maybe not really minimum qualifications for whatever that position is. And so they go to apply to be a sub. And then credit to Brittany Schultz in my office, who is our technician that recruits substitutes, is that she's looking through them and going like, well, you know what? You do qualify to be a custodian. What? You qualify to be a food service. If you are looking for regular employment, have you thought about this? Have you tried that? And so she's really kind of funneling that traffic to get people into meaningful employment. So they have access to those benefits, the retirement and all of that stuff. Whereas they maybe didn't know that and they're like, well, I didn't get the job I wanted. You know, I wanted to be a crew chief and that didn't work out. So I guess I'll just be a sub. So instead of kind of letting that passively go by her, she's really engaged with the people that she's interviewing and making sure that she's giving those opportunities to those that are interested. And some really do genuinely want to be substitutes, but she's really been great about being an advocate for those folks as they come through there.
Great, thank you. That's great to hear. Okay, sorry, I know I'm probably making everybody sick here. Okay. Sick, are we aren't too, oh, no, wait, 5.03 advanced agenda items.
So I don't have any thing, you know, strong on the books unless there's something that the commission would like for me to bring to you guys in a future meeting. If there's anything that comes to mind.
I don't think so. Do we, have we decided on another site visitor we're waiting?
We were waiting because they have all the construction going on right now. I'll put it in the notes here to follow up again with Mr. Bonn and to see what is going on where and when is it a good and safe time to go out where we won't need hard hat somewhere. So yes.
Okay. All right. So I think we are now on to 6.01, the second reading of the classified study, classification study, job descriptions.
Yes. So in my extensive Brown Act training that I did earlier this last week, I made sure to confirm that we can recommend them all as one item so that we wouldn't have to sit here for 50 hours while we did it. We can, you guys are always welcome if you, as you were reading through them or as we look through them today, decide what order, if you want us to open up each one, I'll let you know ones that have changed anyway before we get too far down the road. You can always, when you make your motion, say we would to approve all of the job descriptions recommended except for A, B, C, D, E. If there's any that come up that you would like to revisit at a later time. So we got all of SEIU recommend, ready for second reading. So after today, if all is approved, SEIU have, like I said, they were tight as a drum from the beginning of this process, especially at the BGNT office. But their members have been super collaborative, super responsive, super helpful. And there's just not as many of them as CSEA, right? There's, CSEA is, is huge. So that one has been all the way through. CSEA has also been amazing. We've gotten an outpouring of feedback from the last meeting to this meeting. Just really dedicated, passionate members that are so excited about this process and excited to be included in this process and to be able to provide some insight into what their desk looks like, what their responsibilities look like. I was trying to keep an account for you guys and it just got a little crazy, but it was over 200 responses that we got from the last meeting to this meeting about, you know, one thing, you know, I'd like to change this. I'd like to look at that. I'd like to revisit this. So really, really amazing. And I'm truly, truly appreciative of each of the people that have reached out through this point. Because obviously, like we said from the beginning, I'm not an accompanist. I'm not a computer tech. I'm not any of these things. I don't feel qualified to say unanimously what should and shouldn't be there. So without this level of feedback and engagement from our employees, it would just be so easy to miss things and to not make these job descriptions truly reflective of the people that are actually out there grinding it out, doing the hard work. So I'm so appreciative to all of our members that have participated and all of our employees. On that said, I'm still fine tuning some stuff with our CSEA group. So you'll see from this list that we are not going to be doing second readings for any of our para educator series. I've actually, I should have done this in staff reports, my bad. But I've been working with April. And we determined that maybe it would be best to have kind of a different listening session style where we sit with any pairs that are available and interested in attending. There's still a lack of clarity about the distinctions between the three classifications. And we'd really love to get some collaboration on from people that are doing the work. So we're going to set up a larger meeting where April and I sit together. We're going to be clear about, you know, I'm sure there's many things that they would like to get in front of, you know, the powers that be, but I am no powers that be. And I'm just here about the classification specs. But we're excited to kind of peel that back and get that figured out because I think there's a lot of room for clarity and transparency in those job descriptions. So you're not seeing those today. You're also not seeing the registrar position today. We have two fantastic registrars and they've given me a lot of feedback. And as I'm going through it and working with them and collaborating with them, we're just comparing to like legal rules, ed code rules. And so we haven't gotten a complete consensus. So we're going to bring those back at another time as well. And then you're also not seeing the accounting technician position in this reading. So as you guys saw, we got some written correspondence. We've gotten some public comment. Through these many, the only thing that I deeply regret is I haven't been able to sit with every single person that has requested that of me from our last meeting till now. I haven't gotten to touch base with each one of them. I want to make sure that they all feel heard and they all feel advocated for. And so I haven't gotten to collaborate with everybody in that account technician position. So we'll bring those back at a future meeting, but they did not feel like they passed what my standards were, making sure that it was employee validated, union validated, supervisor validated before I made a recommendation to you guys. So the other ones that you see here today have been through that process. I'll start with our elementary of ones that have changed a little bit. So everybody else is pretty status quo. Our elementary principals assistant. So you guys all received some email correspondence this morning. I've since talked to one of the secretaries received, or one of the now going to be elementary principal assistants and received some additional correspondence from another one in that group. The item that seems to be causing confusion is that health office responsibility. So this has come to us in various ways before that, you know, our office staff at the school site feels an especially high strain because of the needs and demands that are put on their position when there's not a licensed nurse on staff. And sometimes even when there is a licensed nurse on staff, you know. So it's seemingly becoming an increasingly large part of their responsibilities. So I got one email correspondence from one of the people in this position before coming in this meeting that I didn't get to respond to. But the reason that I did not pull it from this item and I'm still rate, making the recommendation. So I did amend the language to the language that you guys saw in your email correspondence today to remove that responsible for language. The liability was still the same between what they were trying to say and what I was trying to say, but it diverted was rubbing them the wrong way. So I wanted to make sure to honor that request. So we changed that. We did amend it a bit. But the reason that it's not pulled all together is because the issue is with from what I'm gathering. So my interpretation and if there's any out there that want to do public comment, they're welcome to clarify and correct me if I'm mistaken, but is that the fear is that if we write this into the job description, that they're responsible for supporting the health office, which includes providing first aid to students and tracking appropriate data in our systems, that it will become a core responsibility of their position. And so I've tried to clarify as I've met with all people on these classification interviews is that if you are currently doing the work and the structure covers the work that you're currently doing, it belongs in the classification. Supporting the health office does not mean you're responsible, you know, so the operating words are important. So supporting versus managing, coordinating, staffing, you know, all of those things. And I know that for them, the feeling is that we are essentially staffing it, right? Sometimes we only have a nurse here once a week or two times a week. So like, it is us staffing it. That may be true, but I don't want to write that in there. That's what I don't want to make a part of your normal job responsibilities. You are not the school nurse when there's no other school nurse. But if you are consistently doing the work and it has been an expectation of this job for many, 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 many a moon, it's just grown and changed in the way that we have to track data and all of those things. It is appropriate to include it. It does not mean that you will be solely responsible for it or that there will be no other opportunities for other positions to potentially be created down the road. I know CSEA has proposed that health assistant position and things like that. So they're worried that by locking themselves So they're worried that by locking themselves into this being in their job description, it will close doors to other opportunities down the road. So um, I plan to continue to talk with them as we move through this process, but didn't have time in the two hours between and I got the last email and this meeting here today. But um, the work is being done by these people. It is supposed to be support and not primary. Um, and so I do feel like it needs to be, that workload needs to be reflected in their classification. But just again to clarify, it would not prevent other positions for being created if that was ever an opportunity. It does not mean that um, the positions of the licensed nurse are wrote in. So you guys will see in that language and the job description that it says
Oh, okay.
Um, that it says supporting the health office and in those specific ways of providing first aid. Um, and tracking appropriate data. So that is one that has changed a little bit from the last time that we've met until now, and that's the kind of justification for where we've gotten to. Do you have a question?
Yeah, well, I think, I think it's a two edged sword, I think. Having worked as a principal in an elementary school where, you know, um, at that time it was secretary, absolutely, but and even the principal, you know, stepped in and did that and because we only had a nurse once a week too, I remember. I, I, I don't, I don't have an answer for it, but I think it's a it's touching because um, some serious things can happen on a campus when there's no nurse there. So I don't know, I don't know what the answer is, I just do, support's probably the best word. I can see their concern.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, actually, I'm just gonna steal this one from Greg so we can kind of move in and out of these. And I can talk as I manage. Yeah. Let me skip this one down, okay. All right, so um, like I said, SEIU, none of them have changed in any way except for formatting, so we talked about that formatting. Um, changing, like the MQs at the bottom, breaking them out, um, educate, you know, experience, training, education. Things like that, so we can take a look at the formatting and make sure that that looks agreeable to you guys. Let me open up.
We, we were changing formatting so that they all look the same, is that?
Yes, all of them, as you guys look through them, they'll, they'll look this way. So um, I did go back and clean up, make sure that all of them had knowledge, then skills and abilities to match the order in which the title is. Um, but this is the formatting change down here. So in the job requirements, minimum qualifications, experience and training was one big paragraph that went through everything. And we broke it out by experience and training, license or certificate, desirable qualifications, so would not prevent somebody from uh, working in the position. We've also drafted, um, or in the middle of drafting for our posting, so that people know what that is. So these are the things that will prevent you from being able to be eligible for this position, but desirable qualifications may impact your salary placement if offered a position. But not necessarily disqualifying. So we broke these out so that my text can use more like a checklist and it's cleaner, more transparent to the applicant and to us while we're screening them as well. So outside of formatting change, uh, content wise, we did not change anything between the last reading and these readings for any of our SEIU positions. I'm gonna go back in here. So we can open up CSEA and we can kind of start with the ones where some stuff has changed. So we can circle back to elementary principal's assistant first. And you guys can see this sentence that, um, and they did say everything else looked great. And so they, the only item that they um, have concerns with is this one here. So this physician provides support to the health office by providing first aid to students and reporting appropriate student health information in alignment with district procedures.
And what, what, what training do they get?
Um, they're all first aid CPR trained, um, and then they have like their Ares training and stuff for
Right, and for that specific.
There's no specific training for, like nursing average outside of first aid and CPR. Because that's, in theory, um, all that they would be doing is first aid level. And anything else would be either referred to a nurse or if it's an emergency situation, obviously, they can call nine one one as quickly as the nurse can. So um, but yeah, there's some stuff that lands in the gray that, um, that I am smart enough to know that I don't know about. And so there's stuff that's there in the middle that I don't feel qualified to speak to. But um, that is, um, the point of the sentence was to capture the things that should be expected of that position. So the, you know, this position has had several names just in the last few years, but um, so I went back through our archive job descriptions, like, did this just pop up? Because I, the nursing responsibilities has not been something on my radar until clerical in-service this year. Uh, Mandy and I were running a training about something else. Nursing stuff came up and there was a lot of energy in the room from our clerical staff of like, hold on, you guys don't know how bad this has gotten. So um, that was the first time it was really on my radar that this is a, an issue for our clerical staff. So I did go back through um, some version of this, providing first aid, you know, supporting the nurse's office, has been in the job description historically. Um, I think that, so the sentence that was here prior to this revision from today was uh, this position is responsible for supporting the health office. They didn't like the responsible language because they felt like it was like assuming sole responsibility. So I clarified, that's not what that statement means. It's the operating word is support in either way. But because it's the same either way, I have no dog in the fight whether we use it or lose it, so we can get rid of the responsible for and we can amend it to this. So I did put this sentence out to the group before us meeting today and say, hey, guys, I can meet in the middle, I can do this. Does this check your boxes? And I did get feedback from one of the secretaries that said what I shared with you earlier, that they were worried that, you know, any inclusion of it would um, delegate that responsibility to them and that they felt that the language that you guys got sent to you via email from one of our, our other clerical staff was the most appropriate. I can't use that language verbatim because specifically calls out in the, in the absence of health office staff or something along those lines. That's not a classification we have. We don't have health offices system, you know, that, so there's, that, that's too murky, I can't use that statement. And it says um, supports the health office by the, the, the verbiage is very similar to what I've listed here. Um, but we can't put in that absence of, and I also, from what they're telling me, that's not correct. But even when there is a licensed nurse there, they're still having to switch hit because, you know, there's only one nurse, but there's six kids with bloody noses because, you know, something went crazy on the playground today. So it also didn't feel like it was doing them justice by just saying like, oh, well, when the nurse is here, we get to check out completely. Because that doesn't feel like that's what I'm being told is happening out there either. So um, that's the last, and I didn't, like I said, I didn't get to have the rest of that conversation with that team uh, today. So you guys are welcome to, to adopt it, you're welcome to recommend that we bring it back in a future meeting if you want that language to be toggled a little bit more. I will say that I still have recommended it because I don't think that there is more appropriate language to represent these tasks than what's listed here. But um, but I also have not finished that collaboration with the clerical team, so maybe something would present itself if I did that. But at this time, I also have been trying to be mindful of, we had, we had a close off date of feedback and um, because there's only so many things I can do in a period of time, like I said, we had a great presentation rate. Um, so I don't want to drag it out forever. I want to, you know, nobody's going to be happy all of the time. Um, but I do want to make sure that they feel represented by it. So I honestly have, no dog in the fight, it's completely your uh, decision. But this is uh, this is the area that we were discussing with that team.
The one question I have is, I, I, I totally get it. I mean, I think it's one of those things where you could have a contact, something really bad happening and fourteen kids with bloody noses and somebody on the playground. But the question I have is, um, do most of these sites just have one, um, I want to call them secretaries.
Sure.
What do they, or do they have?
They have two clerical people at the elementary level. On, on average, now we have some exceptions of this rule, right? So we have smaller schools that have the one person. Um, and we have, you know, uh, large schools that might get an extra person, but on average, this is two. Um, so there's a elementary principal's assistant and an office assistant.
So there's someone to cover the
Correct.
front office when somebody else is doing this.
Correct, okay. Yeah, so this position we're discussing is like the main, their gal Friday, so this is the lead clerical person on site. Um, and not like the person that does like, you know, attendance and things like that, at like Laguna.
But they're both probably trained.
They're, yeah, they're all, everybody that's at the site knows to do CPR first aid.
Okay.
I, I really like, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, I really like that language. Uh, I think it's very appropriate. That being said, it does concern me that not, I know, I know what you're saying that this, you don't want to drag this out too long, but I, I feel like if not everybody has been heard, it would, it would be nice to afford that opportunity. So I kind of would be leaning towards not approving it yet and waiting for that feedback, but I'm also open to hearing what the other commissioners have to say.
To me, circles, having been in those roles, I've actually been a school nurse and is actually gonna be a principal of a school. Being in those roles, I know what can happen and I totally get why they're uncomfortable because, because things happen. But I don't know, but, but there's not a solution to it because school districts can't afford to have a full-time nurse at every school. Um, so this is probably about as best as you're gonna get in terms of the language. So I'm, I, I'm okay either way, we can wait or we can go ahead.
Yeah, um, I, I agree. I don't think that there's a better option, but since we have other items that we're still having pulled, I think it makes sense to pull this one and just wait, just to give you that little extra time in case something were to bubble up. Again, not, but um, we have some other things that are still summary.
Yep.
And so it kind of feels like this should go with that while we're trying to do our due diligence since both of you kind of feel like
I completely agree.
It's the right path, but we just want to make sure everyone's heard, heard, being thorough.
Me too.
So I would hope that we pull, pull this one.
I completely agree. I think that um, everything is the best that it can be until you know better. And so some of those things might come up in some of those conversations and, and we can do get some more. So I'll bring it to you guys in our next meeting. Um, and make sure to prioritize some collaboration with our clerical staff ahead of time. Okay. So um, let me take a look here back at my list so I can look at my notes. There are no other substantial changes um, to content to the CSEA job descriptions outside of formatting. Um, and then also I'm not including things that are qualified as amendments, so nothing that changed the scope or evaluation of a task on a job description. But there have been various things of, you know, clarifying language, example items, so you know, runs reports like attendance, blah, 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 you know, so example things. Um, but nothing that changes the content or the scope of work. And everything else on this list has passed muster with our employees validating it, the supervisor validating it. Um, and ourselves. So the only caveat to that is our occupational therapist job description. So in discussing, in a, in a group email thread with our OTs and Miss Dover, they express some concern around some additional duties that just one of our OTs is doing and it's more about adaptive technology, that they're like an adaptive technology coordinator, liaison, something else that's very specialized, requires additional training and all these things that's not encapsulated in the OT job description. Um, so in talking through what that looks like and how many of them are trained independent, I don't think that we need to update the OT job description with the, with those responsibilities because it does not, it applies to the classification as a whole. Um, but I will be exploring a more comprehensive review of what those tasks are. I just came up fairly recently and to see what we will do with those tasks, whether we need to create a whole new classification, whether it needs to be designated differently, uh, what, whatever that means. But it does sound like it's some substantial work that's going on outside of the classification specs. So um, I will be bringing that to you guys again in the future, but we're gonna set up a more formal process with that OT and myself. And we're gonna do the, kind of the full, the full thing from the beginning. We're gonna do an interview, we're gonna go through and we're gonna talk about that more specifically. But it did not feel applicable to OT as a classification. So the OT classification itself, it sounds looks fine, they had one little amendment change in there that we did make. Um, but that, those other responsibilities will come back to us in one shape or another in the future. Um, so you guys, let me know what you'd like to do. Would you guys like to look at each of these job descriptions? Um, individually, would you?
I have a quick question, sorry. Um, so in our first meeting in December, we took public comment from two different people in two different classifications.
Yes.
One was the accounting tech and I know that that one's being worked on. The second one.
The second one was incorporated into the changes.
It was, okay, perfect, okay, thank you. Just to make sure that we
No, good question.
All the loop was not in.
I, as you can see, I forgot my little notebook, but it was gonna be all part of my staff reports and I was like, hmm, I'll remember what I can remember. But yes, we did follow up on, on both of those public comments and they were resolved and pending.
So is your question, do we want to look at them individually or do we want to, is that what?
You can either make a motion, um, you can, we can look at them individually. Um, it, it's completely up to whatever is at the pleasure of the commission.
Do, do any of the commissioners have, after reviewing them, do we, do you have any additional questions or needing clarification on anything?
I do not.
I don't, no, no. And we can also optionally open it up to public comment if you would like to take public comment before taking action on the item. So in case we missed anything or if I misremembered something, hopefully we have a few secretaries on there today that can hopefully clarify. Um, would you guys like to open it up to public comment for making a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and open it up to public comment. If you would like to make a comment, please just do the little hand raise emoji thing and then we will call on you in the order that we receive them. Looks like the first one is April Silver. April, go ahead and I'm gonna set a little timer on here for three minutes. And go ahead whenever you're ready.
Thank you. I'm just in with the second, or I'm sorry, with the elementary site secretaries. Uh, or the elementary assistants and wanting to have that language revised regarding the health office. I know that office clerks also feel the same way. Um, because also at most elementary sites, they have the elementary secretary or they have an office clerk. So if it's not on the elementary secondary, or elementary secretary's job description, it then would fall to the office clerk. And I know at the secondary site, it's also um, a bit of an issue too for our secretaries here. We have more secretaries. Um, however, they do um, spend a lot of time in the health office. And so I do feel that if you pull the um, the elementary secretary's job description for more review on that particular issue, I know that office clerks, um, both with elementary and secondary would probably appreciate that same courtesy to, to theirs as well. Um, I think because that does, I think it, Rachel, is that the only two that it shows up in is the secretaries and the office clerks?
That's correct.
Okay, and I didn't notice it on the secondary principal's assistant job description, so I think maybe that got removed. Um, but I do think as a whole, it should probably be looked at further if it's gonna be looked at further for one. Um, that is all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, do we have anybody else that would like to provide public comment at this time? So please go ahead and do the hand raises, all right. I have Hasmeen Romero Fernandez. Go ahead, you have three minutes beginning. Ooh, beginning, now, go ahead.
Oops, sorry about that. Hi, everybody. Um, I just wanted, you know, to uh, give a little quick comment on that um, elementary principal's assistant description and why we approached that or like we wanted to change that specific language. or like we wanted to change that specific language. It's, you know, reviewing different job descriptions and duties. We know that we are there to support the kids and obviously if there's not a nurse, we, you know, support the health office. We just noticed that the language, unlike the office assistant, which previously was office clerk, it stated that, you know, they support the health office in the absence of a licensed nurse. And in our new job description, we just noticed that it said, this position is responsible for supporting the health office, providing first aid and following district procedures, if I'm not mistaken. So because it didn't have that piece that said in the absence of a licensed nurse, we were just a little worried that it would fall fully on us. I do understand now that Rachel, you know, commented on the, that some secretaries still support the health office even if a nurse is there, which makes it more, like I, I understand more where she was coming from, coming to that description. But we just wanted to make sure that we all felt, you know, like it was an accurate description. And we, whilst, you know, most of us don't have a nurse full time and it's only like one or two days a week. We just wanted to make sure that it reflected how we feel, which is, you know, we support the office and we are, you know, responsible for helping the kids. But we didn't want to feel like it was a full on responsibility, like another position was basically being filled with our position. So that's where that came from.
Okay, thank you, Hasmeen.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else that would like to provide public comment at this time? So please go ahead and raise that little hand emoji. Okay, it does not look like we have anybody else for a public comment. So I will just go ahead and clarify that the office assistant position, when we made the changes that we made today, we did not match suit with office assistant. So we can pull both or I can match suit. So it did still say this position is responsible because that was a one-off conversation happening in a silo. So we can change it, we can pull both and review it all together, whatever the commission would like to do.
I think you should just pull both and, and that way you have time to think it through.
Be comfortable pulling both.
Oh, sorry, I said, I think that we should pull both just because it would give you time to really think it through instead of making that.
I think Becky was agreeing.
Oh, is that what you, I couldn't understand what you said, Becky.
I'm going to highlight those in the draft now so that you know that we were.
I, I would, yes, I would agree.
All right. So would the commission like to make a motion today? Or would you like to stay the motion for the next meeting? Or make a motion with the exception of, so the line would be make a motion to approve all recommended classifications with the exception of office assistant and elementary office assistant.
Uncomfortable with approving the other ones and pulling those too. Oh, we lost Becky.
Okay. Oh.
I'll second.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can.
Nope, nope.
Just kidding.
All right, I'm going to make these notes in the MCP here. Here she comes. Can you hear us, Becky?
Can she just do audio?
Now I can.
Can you hear me? You can just do, you can just do audio if the video is burning up too much bandwidth. If you want to turn your video off maybe to help.
Can you, how about now, can you hear me?
Yeah, that's pretty good. Okay.
No, I'm going to send it to chat.
We were discussing, can you hear us, Becky? Becky, can you hear us? Becky, can you still not hear us?
Now I can hear you.
Okay, okay, now we're in business. All right, we were discussing making a motion to approve the classifications as proposed. Oh, no. We were going to make a motion to, to approve the classifications as proposed with the exception of the office assistant and the elementary principal's assistant. So that's what we were discussing if you want to comment on that before we officially move forward with a motion.
I, I'm good with that if you can hear me.
Okay, perfect. All right, we need a motion. Go ahead.
I will make a motion that we approve all of the classification standards presented today except for the elementary principal's assistant and the office assistant.
My second.
All in favor, yes?
Yes, yes.
We did it.
Am I back on, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry, I'm not sure what's, I haven't moved, I don't know what's happening. Okay, are we?
We're on to next meeting.
Finished with that?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. Next meeting date, I believe we have, it's February 26th, correct?
That is correct.
4:00 PM, is everybody good with that meet? And that is a regular, our regular meeting, correct?
Yes, we're getting back to our regularly scheduled fourth Wednesday of the month life, hopefully for the foreseeable future.
Okay, everybody good with that date? No issues?
Be good. I'm good.
Okay. And I will, if nothing else, we will adjourn this meeting at 5:00 PM.
Perfect, thanks so much for hanging through there with us, Becky.